20th, 2025. Thank you for attending. For those of you who are here for the first time, welcome. We appreciate your coming here and watching the wills of justice take place, right? So, we begin our meetings with a pledge of allegiance and then we follow with certain procedural matters. And then ultimately, we come to a point where we have presentations. And presentations are usually where we recognize individuals, events, or things that are important in our community. And tonight, we have five of those. So it's exciting. And so we hope you can stay for them and be part of that celebration. So let us begin, and I can ask you all to please rise. And I'd like to invite Jason Joseph from Dillard High School to meet me at the podium so we can begin the pledge of allegiance. Is he here? Jason? Didn't show up. Oh, boy. Wolf. Anyone could help. The mayor doesn't know the words.
Yeah.
The mayor doesn't know the words. Can someone help?
There we go. We got it, young lady.
There we go. And what school do you go to?
Pinecrest.
Pinecrest? And what school do you go to?
Pinecrest.
Oh, very nice. So can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Put your right hand over your heart and go right ahead.
I-
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in two republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, clarity, and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. To give a little token of our appreciation for your coming today, all right? Thank you so much. Oh, want a picture? Oh, wait. Come back. Picture. Step and repeat.
Appreciate you wearing those dresses, right?
Thank you, girls. Thank you. Oh. You want to do it again? Come on. Come back. Come back. Come back. Are you mom? Very nice. Thank you. Okay, very good. So if you would join me in this moment of silence and share in your thoughts to people who have just recently passed away. Jim Nader, who was the former Broward County Public Schools Superintendent, as well as a World War II veteran, Mr. Thomas Dowdy Jr., who was 100 years old?
Yes.
100 years old. So let's just take this moment of silence together. Great, thank you. We have a couple of announcements regarding retirements. Folks from our, who have served with us for quite a few years, like to make the announcements of their retirement. David Agler, who was a court liaison supervisor in our police department. He served with us for 27 and a half years. Maria Sulal Hall, who is administrative aide in the police department, and she served with us 25 years. And Peggy Roddy, public safety aide, also in the police department. She served with us almost 30 years, 29.5 years. So congratulations, and I wish you the best in your retirement. And thank you for your devotion and commitment to our city all those many, many years. So, Mr. Clerk, may I please ask you to call the roll?
Yes. Vice Mayor Herbst not present. Commissioner Glassman?
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Present.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Here.
Mayor Trent Talis?
Here. We have one agenda announcement. OFR II is being removed from the agenda. There are no other revisions. So can I please have a motion to approve the minutes and the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Talis?
Yes, and those items are now approved. So now we begin our presentations. And it's my honor to be the first presentation tonight. And I would ask that the members of, well, tonight's a special occasion because the Fort Lauderdale High School Mock Trial Team has been the, are the winners of the Florida Mock Trial State Championship. So congratulations. So I would like to invite Susan Leon, who is our chief education officer, to join me at the podium. And she will also call the names of the winners who participated in the event, and will be providing everyone with a certificate this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. We're very excited to honor and recognize the mock trial team from the Fort Lauderdale High School as being the first school, first time for this school, to win the state championship. So congratulations.
Yes.
And then to top it off, they went to Nationals and won third place. I'd like to call up to the podium Ariana Alexander. Brennan Blanar. Laney Blystone. Natalie Cabrera Hernandez. Angelina Chatori. Marvin Exantus. Yasmin couldn't be here tonight, but we want to recognize her. She is at FSU. Haley Militzer. Kyra Myers. Addison Queen. We'd also like to recognize attorney coach Janito Simon. Attorney coach Jessica Groban Morales is in court. Make it, and last but certainly not least, the one who makes it all happen, the magnet coordinator, the teacher and coach, Mr. Daniel Katz from Fort Lauderdale High School. So we also have a special recognition before you take pictures. One of this team's students won the outstanding award, Outstanding Attorney Award at Nationals, and that is Marvin Exantus.
Marvin, I'll see you in court. Hold on a second. Let's just move this a little bit.
That's encouraging to get on the-
All right.
All right. Right here. One, two.
You're too close now. Cameras in hand.
All right.
Flying L's. Flying L's. Thank you all. Good luck in school.
Yes.
Our next presentation is a recognition of participants in the City of Fort Lauderdale Startup FTL Entrepreneurial Program. And I'd like to invite Melissa Mada, Public Affairs Division, to come to the podium. Yeah, sorry about that.
It's okay. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. If I may ask, the first and second cohort participants to also come and join me here at the podium.
We're going to lose our audience tonight.
Yes, it's a big group, yes.
You attract a big crowd.
Well, good evening, everyone. Today, I want to take the time to recognize these groups of individuals that have graduated from the Startup FTL Program. The Startup FTL Program is a 10 to 12 week program facilitated by the Public Affairs Division from the City of Fort Lauderdale, where individuals learn how to grow, expand, and start a business here in the City of Fort Lauderdale. These individuals met with community leaders as well as city staff members to understand the process of starting and operating a business in the city. For 10 to 12 weeks, I saw these individuals turn their business vision into a reality. Through class activities and discussions, the participants were provided with tools, resources, and the necessary contacts of business leaders willing to provide their services to help them be successful in their business journey and their growth. The program has successfully facilitated two cohorts, one in the fall of 2024, and one that recently concluded this spring of 2025. Following the end of the second cohort this spring in April 30th, and in celebration of Economic Development Week, the Public Affairs Division hosted the Building Business With Impact Pitch Competition. During this event, we invited both of the cohorts to present a five-minute business pitch to guest judges. Six participants, who are, I believe, most of them here, presented their business goals, strategies, and their vision to five community judges. And I do want to recognize the ones in attendance. We have Rosanna Tinker from the first cohort, John Gillen from the first cohort, Claudia Rodriguez from the second cohort, Kobe Williams, Ateise Ajoku, Oscar Salas, Michelle Brophy, Michael Darth, Brianna Reeves, Sharnell Charleston, and Dee DeFoe, all from the second cohort. And I would like to ask very kindly to have the city manager and the commissioners, if you could join us for a group picture.
Stay where we are then.
Stay where we are.
Yes.
Oh, stay where we are. Congratulations, everybody.
Congratulations.
Mayor, I just want to say that I had the privilege of being at that competition when they pitched their businesses. Great presentations. Thank you all for your cooperation. Beautiful event.
Great. And our next presentation is Florida City and County Management Association recognition of the 100th anniversary of the Commission Manager Form of Government in the City of Fort Lauderdale. Is Sarah Spurlock here? There she is. From the Florida City and County Management Association. I wonder where you went, Sarah.
Good to see you all.
Good evening, Sarah.
Good evening. It's nice to see you all. Mayor Trent Talis, city commissioners, city manager Williams, staff and residents. My name is Sarah Hannah Spurlock, and I am here on behalf of the Florida City and County Management Association, FCCMA. FCCMA is a professional organization that represents 626 practicing public administrators serving Florida's cities and counties. Since its founding in 1946, the association has worked to strengthen ethical standards and promote professional local government management across the state. One of our key initiatives, the Professional Management Matters Committee, recognizes significant milestones that reflect a commitment to excellence in local governance. This evening, it is my honor to present a certificate to the City of Fort Lauderdale in recognition of your 100th year operating under the Commission Manager Form of Government as acknowledged by the International City County Management Association, or ICMA. The Commission Manager model was established to professionalize local government by separating administrative functions from political influence. Under this model, voters elect a commission that in turn appoints a professional manager to oversee daily operations, implement policy, and ensure continuity and accountability, much like a corporate board and CEO. Today, nearly 70% of Florida's 411 municipalities and all but two of the state's 67 counties operate under this structure. On behalf of the FCCMA officers, board of directors, and members, I extend our sincere congratulations to the City of Fort Lauderdale on this centennial milestone. At this time, I'd like to formally present the certificate to the city commission and the city manager.
Raquel, why don't you come up? Okay, we don't have to fight over whose wall this is going on. Wait, I'll just move this. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Sarah.
Good to see you. Good to see you all.
Thank you for being here. Yeah, you're not meeting, you're not presenting. Our fourth presentation tonight, I'd like to invite Commissioner Beasley Pittman to present a proclamation regarding Menstrual Hygiene Day in the City of Fort Lauderdale. Commissioner?
I'm going to remain here. Unfortunately, the organization that we were going to present to tonight, for seeing force- force situation, they were unable to be present to receive this proclamation. Before I go into the proclamation, wanting to share the importance of this proclamation regarding Menstrual Hygiene Day, just bring an awareness how I came about understanding the necessity for this, because there's many times that we live in our own worlds and our bubbles, and we don't realize how other individuals are affected or have a gap or an opportunity where they not have what they need for everyday life. I was in Tallahassee my first, after I was first elected, I was elected in December, went to Tallahassee in January, and there were high school students, about maybe 12 girls, that was going and lobbying our representatives to make this a law that recognized that there is a issue regarding availability to menstrual hygiene products. So with that being said, I became one who was really motivated to begin talking about this and making it a conversation. And then I'm also excited to say, without even having the conversation with our new city manager, City Manager Williams, she's taking up the initiative to make sure within our city, our city offices, our buildings, those opportunities where we even lease space, these products are available to everyone. So with that being said, I would like to read the proclamation from the Office of the Mayor of the City of Fort Lauderdale. This is in recognition of Menstrual Hygiene Day, it was requested by me, Commissioner Pam Beasley-Pitman. Whereas, Menstrual Hygiene Day is observed annually on May 28th and is a global movement dedicated to raising awareness of the importance of good menstrual hygiene management and addressing the widespread issue of period poverty, within the goal of building a world where access to menstrual care is guaranteed and managed with dignity and without barriers. And whereas, menstrual health remains a vital yet frequently under-recognized aspect of public health, education, equity, and addressing stigma through open dialogue and the availability for essential resources is key to supporting the well-being and dignity of individuals who experience menstruation. Whereas, period poverty is defined as an inability to afford menstrual products, sanitation and hygiene facilities affects millions of people worldwide, with research indicating that two in five women and girls in the United States alone struggle with meeting their basic monthly needs due to financial hardship, leading to negative impacts on health, education, employment, and border cycles of poverty and inequity. And whereas, the name of the company that, excuse me, the name of the organization that we were recognizing, The Beauty Initiative Incorporated, a Fort Lauderdale-based, non-profit organization, has demonstrated extraordinary leadership in addressing hygiene insecurity and period poverty through compassion, outreach, education, and public advocacy, improving access to essential products, and also restoring dignity to thousands of lives. And whereas, the organization authored and successfully advocated for the learning of the, excuse me, for the learning of the dignity bill, which is now a state law, ensuring that Florida public schools provide free menstrual products to students, and influenced Broward County Public Schools to dedicate a permanent budget line for period supplies in every school. And whereas, through the programs including Beyond the Bookshelves, a partnership with the Broward County Libraries, along with educational initiatives known as Hygiene University and the Flow Code, The Beauty Initiative has distributed more than 1 million hygiene products and empowered young women through inclusive and age-appropriate menstrual health education. And whereas, the City of Fort Lauderdale proudly supports the mission of the Menstrual Hygiene Day and celebrates the pioneer work of The Beauty Initiative, whose commitment to menstrual equity is assessed to, access to health, education, and the restoration of dignity continues to uplift the lives, empowering communities, and inspiring lasting change. Now, therefore, we, as the City Commissioners of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 28, 2025, as Menstrual Hygiene Day, and the City of Fort Lauderdale is dated this day, the 20th day of May, 2025, signed by our mayor, Dean J. Trantellis. Thank you.
I guess we can send the proclamation to that person.
We'll make sure that the organization receives it, and thank you, Mayor, for supporting this proclamation.
Sure, absolutely. And our final and fifth presentation, I'd like to invite Commissioner Sorenson to present a proclamation regarding National Public Works Week in the City of Fort Lauderdale, and I'd like to invite our Acting Director of Public Works.
Yeah, get up here. Thank you, Mayor, and the whole Public Works team, come on up.
Talal Abi Karim.
Get on up here, Public Works. Come on. Just a representative group of the whole Public Works team. Thank you. Come on up here. Get up here, line up, great.
These are the unsung heroes in our city, I have to tell you.
Mayor, I mean, you know, you know this, I mean, just how important their work is day in and day out. I mean, I think when I talk to neighbors in my area, the Public Works components of our city are by far and away one of the main focus folks want to talk about, invest in, continue to improve. And so, thank you all for what you do, I'm so appreciative of it, day in and day out. And Abby, thank you for your leadership of the team, and we have a little proclamation that I'll read, at least a little bit of it, just acknowledging the great, great work you do. Whereas, the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, with a theme of people, purpose, and presence, highlighting these three ideals and motivate public works professionals. Whereas, public works professionals are responsible for designing, building, improving, and protecting our city by maintaining transportation infrastructure, roads, drinking water, managing water treatment, wastewater systems, collecting and disposing of solid waste and recycling, planting, distributing trees, sweeping city streets, operating efficient fleets, community improvement projects. This is the backbone for our city. Whereas, the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work system and its programs. It's in the public interest for everyone in the City of Fort Lauderdale to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest in understanding the importance public works plays in our city. Now, therefore, we, as City Commissioners of the City of Fort Lauderdale, hereby proclaim the week of May 18th to the 24th as National Public Works Week in the City of Fort Lauderdale, signed, your mayor, Dean J. Trantellis. Thank you. Abby, come on up here, if you'd like to say some words, Abby, appreciate it, get up here.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner, on behalf of over 500 staff in the Public Works, we thank you for this proclamation. Commissioner Sorenson mentioned some of the stuff that we do, and you may know and see some of our crews and staff out there fixing stuff, repairing stuff. However, we have a whole lot more working behind the scene, behind fences, at water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant. I'd like to mention a few of the category of folks that we have in Public Works. Those include water and water, water treatment plant operator, wastewater treatment plant operator, mechanics, machinists, electrician, electrotech, process control engineer, lab technician, inventory specialist, service worker, chief, supervisors, manager, dispatch center folks, and call centers, call takers. Of course, you're familiar with project managers, engineer, program manager, scientists, land surveyor, asset manager, GIS specialist, computer modeler, fleet manager, and arborist, performance analyst, accountant, financial folks, and administrative folks. Also, over the last 10 years, we've heard a lot about resilient infrastructure. Tonight, I'd like to take the opportunity to talk a little bit about resilient people, that is, the resilient people of Public Works. Without them, we can't do anything. Over the last 10 years, our staff have been tested, tested again, and retested through many emergencies, breaks, major floods, like the flood in 2023, and they all came through like shining stars. I could recount many emergencies in many neighborhoods, including the hurricane of 2017, Irma, Storm Etta in 2020, the Great 23 flood, Kink Tides, and over half a dozen of major sewer break throughout the city, including two in Rio de Janeiro. George English, Victoria Park, Northeast 36th Street.
Don't remind us.
Southwest 7th. And throughout all of these emergencies.
Can we take the award back?
Throughout all of these emergencies, the hard work of our people, their dedication, their perseverance help us to return to normal and to restore the services. I could not, I could not ask for a better staff, I could not ask for a better crews. We're very thankful for what they do. Simplly stated, you cannot have resilient infrastructure without having resilient people to manage it. And lastly, our thanks, we can't do what we do in the bar, in this city without the collaboration from other department, mainly police, fire, and strategic communication. The police folks are right there with us on the road when we have breaks with their cruiser and flasher protecting our people from harm. Fire department and the emergency managers are checking on us, making sure we don't get tired and burned up. The shirt team feed us in many emergency overnight, and of course, strategic communication who are there lockstep with us, putting out messages to our neighbor at 24/7, including many boil water notices in the middle of the night. So for that, we're thankful. Of course, our biggest thanks go to the, our biggest supporters, that is, the City Managers Office, led by Manager Williams, ACM Forhager, ACM Grant, ACM Roger, ACM Reese, and ACM Cooper. They are our bigger supporters, cheering us and helping us to do the best that we can and to provide the best services to our customer. And one of our last thanks is, we can't do what we do without the support of this City Commission. In conclusion, this is Public Works, this is us, this is what we do, and we thank you.
Okay, great, and thank you, folks, we really appreciate all the great work you do for us. So that concludes our presentation program. Of course, we lost 99% of all the people participating this evening. This must be all the lobbyists. All right, so, at this point, I will ask each member of the commission if there's a consent agenda item that they wish to pull. Consent agendas, the consent agenda items are those items in which we will vote on collectively at one vote, unless there is a, unless there's a specific item that a commissioner wishes to pull. No one has asked, no one has signed up to speak on anything tonight, so.
Wow.
But I know Mark Dickerman is gonna find a reason to talk nonetheless. So, so anyway, Commissioner Beasley-Pitman, are there any items that you wish to pull?
No items tonight, thank you.
Commissioner Glassman?
None, thank you.
And Commissioner Sorenson?
None, thanks.
Okay. Of course, there are only five items. You kept it lean, Raquel, you kept it lean. All right, so, would someone like to move the approval of the consent agenda items?
Moved second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman? Yes. Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trantellis?
Yes, and all the consent agenda items have now been approved. Moving on to M1, motion approving a First Amendment and five-year extension to the agreement with TMF Holdco LLC for the annual three-day Tortuga Musical Festival, Music Festival on Fort Lauderdale Beach. Someone like to move the item?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second?
Second, and I just have comments before.
Please, any comments or questions?
Great, thanks. So, I think we had another really successful Tortuga, thank you for, Tortuga planners for being here, and want to keep the partnership going. Raquel, something you and I have talked about is, as we're evaluating our rate structure for all events, this agreement would fall under that, so as we create that matrix and figure out, fine-tune how those rates will play out for our events, that'll apply to Tortuga going forward as we work on this, is that, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, great, and from a, remind me from a sequencing standpoint where we are in that rate structure's evolution and coming back to us and talking through?
We anticipate coming to the commission after the break, and Carl, our Parks and Recreation Director, could add a little bit to that timeline.
Great, thanks.
Good evening, Commissioner, Carl Williams, Parks and Recreation Director. Yes, so, we do intend to provide an updated presentation to you, likely it'll be after break, our Parks Board will have a presentation this month, and then once we finalize those minutes, I'll be able to compile those comments and come back for you at that time.
Okay, great, thank you very much, appreciate that. Great, so, all support moving it forward. Thanks, Mayor.
Any other questions or comments?
Just want to say thank you, it's a great partnership, it's a great, great event for our city every year, getting international attention, and plus, all of the missions of the group, everything, all of the work, all the projects that are connected to it, outstanding, so, thank you.
Yeah, and that's especially true since they are, they're advocates for ocean protection and oceanography, and we can't do enough in our efforts to try to preserve our natural resources. Okay, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trantellis?
Yes, and M1 is now approved, R1, appointment of board and committee members, Mr. Clerk, would you like to read the names into the record?
Yes, for the June 3 resolution, Central City Redevelopment Advisor Board, Nicola Stan, nominated by Commissioner Glassman, Fire Rescue Facilities Bond Issue Blue Ribbon Committee, Bruce Angier, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, and for tonight, Seminary System Board of Trustees, Chelsea Krebs, nominated by Mayor Trantellis, Education Advisor Board, Janet Gualtieri, nominated by Commissioner Glassman, Robert McComsey, nominated, that's for General Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees, Robert McComsey, nominated by Mayor Trantellis, Homeless Advisory Committee, Robin Martin, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, Raymond Detman, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, Marine Advisor Board, Jason Dunbar, nominated by Mayor Trantellis, Brett Revotsky, nominated by Mayor Trantellis, John Lynch, nominated by Vice Mayor Herbst, Northwest Progressive Flagler Heights Redevelopment Board, Mallory Sullivan, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, and Planning and Zoning Board, Whitney Dutton, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, and that rounds it out.
Okay, anyone have any questions or comments or modifications?
I do, Mayor. And I want to have a discussion about this, I want to ask the city attorney some questions when I review Section 2.220, dealing with city boards and when I review Section 2.220, dealing with City Boards and Committees' Code of Conduct. I'm fine with all the names, but I would like to pull one for discussion. That would be under the Homeless Advisory Committee, Michael O'Brien, appointed to that committee, reappointed to that committee.
Okay, what is your question?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that name was not read as to be adopted.
Oh, it's on, I'm sorry, it's on our agenda?
It's on your agenda, but the clerk didn't read that name.
Okay, so that's.
It will not be on the resolution.
That's been pulled?
Removed.
Okay. I didn't know that if a name was on here, you could just not mention it, and then it's not on our agenda anymore?
It's not, it's not being nominated and voted on tonight.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Please call the roll.
A resolution, City Commissioners of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, Boarding Committee members as set forth in the Exhibit 1, Task 2, made a part hereof. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trantellus?
Yes, and those appointments to our Boarding Committees are now approved. And I want to thank each and every one of them for your volunteerism and your commitment to our community. R2, resolution approving the interlocal agreement between the City of Fort Lauderdale, Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency, and the Broward County Board of County Commissioners to extend the Northwest Progresso Flagler Heights Community Redevelopment Area for 10 years with the city-only tax increment funding. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
Any further comments or questions regarding this? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution, City Commissioners of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving an interlocal agreement among Broward County, the City of Fort Lauderdale, and the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency for extension of the term of the Fort Lauderdale Northwest Progresso Flagler Heights Community Redevelopment Area and providing for effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
No.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trantellus?
Yes, and R2 is approved. OFR1, this is the first reading of an ordinance regarding business tax receipts and miscellaneous business regulations. We don't have to do any disclosures, so, someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
The ordinance has been introduced. Any questions or comments? There being none, please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending Section 15-57 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida by consolidating local business tax categories and providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions, correction of scriven reserves, and an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trantellus?
Yes, and OFR1 is now approved on first reading. OFR2, it's the first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 27 of the Code of Ordinances to establish an administrative application process, associated fees, and defined vehicles for higher services and operating standards. Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
We request to remove that.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was asked to be removed. I'm sorry. Never mind. OSR1, second reading. Quasi judicial ordinance approving a public purpose use and structure. This is Progresso Village Stormwater Pump Station. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Beasley Pittman, do you have any additional disclosures?
No additional.
I have none. Commissioners Glassman?
None.
And Commissioner Sorenson?
None.
Okay, would someone please move to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Moving and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trantellus?
Yes, public hearing on OSR1 is now approved. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
The ordinance has been introduced. Please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving pursuant to Section 47-18.26 of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Unified Land Development Regulations, the location of a stormwater pump station and associated facilities of public purpose uses and structures within a residential family mid-rise, medium-high-density zoning district on a property legally described as Olive Lots 1, 2, and 3, Block 262 Progresso, according to the plat thereof as recorded in Platbook 2, Page 18 of the public records of De County, Florida, said land situate lying and being in the city of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, containing 10,135 square feet, more or less, and identified by the United States Postal Service address 845 Northwest 3rd Avenue, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, granting relief from Section 47-5.19, Section 47-5.36, Section 47-19.5.C.1, Section 47-21.10, and Section 47-25.3.A.3.D. I. of the ULDR, providing for conflicts, providing for effective date, providing for conditions for the termination of public purpose status. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trantellus?
Yes, and OSR1 is now approved on second reading. OSR2, this is the second reading. Ordinance amending the maximum daily penalties for code violations to align with Chapter 162 of the Florida State Statutes. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
The ordinance has been introduced. Is there any, are there any questions? There being none, please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending Chapter 11 Code Enforcement, Section 11-12 C of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, by amending maximum daily penalties for code violations to align with Chapter 162 Florida statutes, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trantellus?
Yes, and OSR2 has now been approved on second reading. Finally, OSR3, second reading. An ordinance amending, oh my God, is it only 648?
Don't do that. Just keep going.
I want you all to see.
Just keep going. Don't acknowledge it.
I want you all to see the top of that puck. Keep going, come on. An ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations to permit allocation of residential dwelling units from a sending site to a receiving site utilizing the Transfer of Development Rights Program. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
The ordinance has been introduced. Are there any questions? There being none, please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations, Section 47-13.20 entitled Downtown Regional Activities Center Review Process and Special Regulations, Section 47-13.50 entitled Regional Activities Center Districts General Regulations, and Section 47-28 entitled Flexibility Rates to Permit Allocation of Residential Dwelling Units From a Sending Site to a Receiving Site Utilizing the Transfer of Development Rights Program, Providing for Severability, Repeal of Conflicting Ordinance Provisions, Codification, and Correction of Scriven Reserves and an Effective Date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trantellus?
Yes, and OSR3 is now approved on second reading. Before we conclude, I just want to bring to the commission's attention, I got a text during the meeting from Federal Court Judge Demetrius Leas, who brought to my attention that the General Services Administration is planning on offering the existing federal courthouse for sale effective January 1, 2027. So it's about 19 months away. He's asking, he's informing me of that for a different reason, but I think we all need to sit back and think about what our response is going to be when that goes up for sale. You know, is this, does the city have an interest in it? Is it, I mean, we cannot impose historical standards on it because it's a federal government property. So, it's something we need to think about, put it out in the community. Is the developer going to go in there just to tear it down? You know, anyway, I just want to bring that to everyone's attention so we can resume that conversation which we started a number of months ago. And now, there is, the administration is now giving it a defined sale date. So I just want to bring that to everyone's attention.
Mayor, could you share that information with us? Whatever they sent, so we can have.
That's all he said. He said, that's all it was.
What was the date, I'm sorry?
January 1, 2027.
Thank you.
Do we have, if I remember right, I mean, is there some function where a government entity has first opportunity, right of refusal?
Well, they've come to us. And they, you know, the GSA has met with us multiple times, and, you know, and I don't know what to tell them. I know we've discussed it before here in the commission, but, you know, I don't quite know what we, you know, we talked about maybe buying it for, you know, converting it to our city hall. We've talked about, you know, a lot of different things, but we never. Their concern is that this building is going to be sold. The new courthouse is going to be finished, and they, we don't still have, we don't have the parking garage built yet in the new building. And that was his concern. So, I've already brought this to the attention of our parking gurus. And, and so, we're going to, we're going to meet to see, you know, if we can accelerate that process because they need a parking garage. So, anyway, I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. Is there any further business, city ma, I'm sorry?
Yeah, Mayor, I had another separate question, if that's right.
Go ahead.
Dwayne, I was, I went to another city commission meeting, and it was interesting, they, I forget the exact language, but before the city commission meetings start, or once it started, the, in effect, the mayor, the chair, said, during the meeting, you know, it's not permissible, or we discourage cheering if you agree with someone, or booing if you disagree, or something, you know. I don't know what the terminology of that is. Are you familiar with that, with cities that do that? Or, you know what I'm saying, it's a.
We've never, have we ever had that issue, problem? I remember in years past, there have been some lightning rod issues where, where people would fill, you know, the audience with signs and all that. And Mayor Noggle, that's how far back I remember this, he would say, okay, raise your signs once, let everyone see them, and then don't raise them again, or you'll be dismissed from the room. But, can you remember where we've really encountered that?
It was just interesting because they basically said, part of the decorum in a business meeting, we just don't want a lot of cheering. Not that we get a lot of it, but I just thought it was an interesting concept. I don't know if we've ever done that, or what the precedent is, Dwayne, for that, or.
So part of the sunshine law is order and decorum. And the, the mayor as chair of the meeting is responsible for maintaining the order and decorum of the meeting. I am aware that some bodies, some collegial bodies will, the chair will state at the beginning of the meeting the expectations for order and decorum. But it's, it's.
Well, look, if anyone wants to cheer what I have to say, you're welcome to do it anytime during the course of the meeting. I don't want to hold you back.
Okay, so it's kind of up to the chair of the meeting, how the, what's, okay. I was just, I'd never heard that before at a meeting. Okay, thanks, Mayor.
And if a person becomes disruptive, that also is an opportunity where I would, you know, look to our police chief and say, you know, if this is going to interrupt the proceedings, I can have that person escorted out.
Right, okay. Good, thanks.
Madam City Manager, do you have any additional business?
Nothing further.
Dwayne?
No additional.
Okay, this meeting is now concluded. Thank you.
Go Cats!